I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education. It is July the 18th at 6:00. I welcome all of you here. I'm glad to see there's a few here. We'll have Mr. Cleveland is going to do the invocation and pledge. If everybody will rise, please.
Father, we thank you and come before you tonight with humbled hearts in the jobs that you've given us. And Father, we just lift up the students as they finish the summertime and continue to prepare for the next year, continue to get them excited about what's to come this next year, and the staff help them to reengage and prepare and have a good year this year. Father, we thank you for all those that protect our freedoms and liberties around the world as they stand in harms way. We lift them up to you tonight and continue to lift up those that are hurting tonight. We just thank you for all you're going to do for us this evening. And with respect to all fates, I pray this in your holy name. Amen.
It's Luke.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, you have before you an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Any discussion? A motion by Tom, a second by Ann. All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, next we have the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. Is there any discussion on any of the items?
It can't be. It's not allowed as consent agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Oh.
It could be right.
Okay.
Dan's not used to being here this early.
Yeah.
Well. He's just working too hard. He's doing his last minute. He's just working hard on him. Should we all clap when he comes in?
It's just about to adjourn. You just about missed it.
Well, we can start now.
And now we have, next on the agenda, final approval of the FY '14 milage rate with Mr. Dan Jones.
Okay, last meeting, we give tentative approval to the milage rates at 16.3 for MNO and then the 14, I mean 14. 2.418 for bond, and we advertise the five-year history in the paper as required. And so what we need to do tonight is finalize our milage rates. And I recommend the superintendent that we do 16.30 for MNO and 2.418 for bonds.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education adopt the MNO milage rate of 16.3 mils and the debt service milage rate of 2.418 mils for the FY '14 fiscal year as presented.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
A motion by Ann and a second by Tom? All in favor? Any just? All in favor?
Okay, yeah, I was gonna say, you said any discussion.
Well, I was going to, and then I thought we've already discussed it today, haven't we?
Well, I didn't know.
Okay. Unanimous. Okay, next we have public participation, which I'm assuming we don't have any. And then we have presentation and discussion items. First on the agenda is the local school council annual reports with Mr. Joey Perkel.
This is our last local school council annual report to the board for this school year. And this is our, these are the annual reports for all of our middle schools and our high schools. As you can see, all of the local school councils from our middle and high schools met their minimum of four times, with some of them meeting more than four. And I've listed for you just a general bulleted list of some of the common topics that they discussed. As you have read their minutes throughout the year, you are aware of the different things that they've discussed throughout the year. We appreciate local school councils, the work they do. I've listed all the chairpersons from all of these local school councils. We appreciate them and their hard work in keeping up with the local school council at their individual schools. We do have some recommendations from middle schools and high schools, and I'll start with middle schools. We have a recommendation from Liberty Middle School. Liberty is in great need of new projectors for the Promethean boards. The projectors have become outdated, making the boards so dim that students cannot read the board without the classroom lights off. When the lights are off, they can't see, to write, or use other print resources at their desk. A recommendation from Ottawa Middle School is with the addition of new learning cottages, they request, would like to request a fence around the mobile classrooms to ensure the safety of all students and faculty. Riverwatch Middle School asks to please continue to look at the capacity issues at Riverwatch Middle School. And South Forsyth Middle School, parents still feel uninformed about the Common Core standards. They would like to hear more information from Forsyth County schools concerning these standards and future assessments linked to these standards. We have also recommendations from some of our high schools. Forsyth Central's recommendation is to pursue STEM certification for the STEM Academy at Forsyth Central High School. Lambert High School had several recommendations. Allow schools increased levels of flexibility to address school-specific needs as identified in the school's aims, school improvement plan, effectively creating an IEP squared program for each school across the system, including allowing a variety of course offerings, specifically offering honors-level courses in social studies and language arts. To pursue opportunities to increase student access to technology and digital textbooks where possible, and provide students and parents with a long-range planning tool to assist with student scheduling for the purpose of meeting new CCRPI, measurements of school progress, and improving graduation rates and workforce readiness. Support the needs of the community by continuing to develop resources and connections to existing resources similar to the job board and Wi-Fi directory available via the county website. To work directly with schools to improve facilities based on specific needs of the school. And they encourage the school board to send items to their local school council for review. If there's something that comes up where feedback is needed, the Lambert High School Local School Council welcomes the opportunity to support the board in gathering information, and they hope to be able to provide any input that may be needed in the future. And then our last recommendation is from North High School. As the board is aware, the facilities at North Forsyth High School are stretched to their limit, and their overcapacity status remains their greatest concern. We urge you to consider all options that will allow our students to receive the best possible education in an equitable fashion. We are particularly concerned with classroom space, lab space, CTAE classroom expansions, cafeteria, and gym space needed to accommodate the growing population at our school. We feel we are in desperate need of updated facilities. And that concludes the local school council report for middle and high schools.
Okay. And I assume that we are, the appropriate departments are looking at the issues?
Working on, yes.
Okay.
They are.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, next we have a student assessment update with Beth Kiefer.
Good evening, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Beth Kiefer and Carl Mercer, my wonderful sidekick. I love having somebody to be able to work with. It's great. That knows what I'm talking about. Understands my language. We are going to present information about student assessment update in areas of writing, CRCT, and EOC. And Mr. Mercer is going to start first with writing.
All right, so we'll start first with writing scores. We have writing in fifth, eighth, and 11th grade. This first slide, you can see the top column in each table shows Forsyth County and how they performed, does not meet, meets, exceeds, and then meets and exceeds. We have one area where we reduced by one percentage point. Just note that we're still at 90 or above, and that meets and exceeds. And also, we'll notice that for grade five, we did see an increase in the exceeds in that Grade eight, no change, still at 95 percent. And then grade 11, up one at 99 percent. This gives detailed information about our percent exceeds. The top left box shows Forsyth County schools, and then the other two boxes show the RISA and state. You can see that in every area that the exceeds percentage went up except for grade eight, where we had the minus four, but they stayed the same with the pass. So the pass rate did not change, it was just a change in the exceeds rate. So we, at that level that we're at with 95 percent, you're going to see some back and forth in the exceeds area as we strive to have more students exceed.
I want to talk about CRCT. Remember that CRCT is grades three through eight, reading, ELA, math, science, and social studies. And as of the new CCRPI, all subject areas will count in CCRPI. Used to be that AYP only reading, ELA, and math counted, so everything's important, as it should be. We have done a meets and exceeds. This is for grades three and five, and you can see that always at 90 percent or above on percent meets and exceeds. We are five to 10 points ahead of the state. We have separated on the next slide and done just an exceeds. Again, you see always above the state and grades three and five. For grades six through eight, the CRCT meets and exceeds comparison again shows anywhere from five to possibly up to 20 points difference, and again, always above 90 percent. So our students do very well. The exceeds for grades six through eight, again, almost double. Scale score comparisons, we've thrown this couple of slides in just because parents, I think, relate to scale scores. That's what they see on this individual student report when it comes home, so that parents can relate to the scale score and kind of see where their students are in comparison to the state with the scale score that they got in each of the areas. Again, we've done well across the state. For the grades six through eight, same thing, scale score comparison. Again, we've done very well across. Grade eight, science, you'll notice in the percentages in here, we've done really well in grade, in all the grades across. Science and social studies seem to be areas that we definitely need to focus on across all grade levels, three through eight in the CRCT. While they're at 90 percent and above meets and exceeds, they're at the lower end of 90 as opposed to. So that's one area, those are two areas that I know that we need to focus on, grade eight science. After talking with Mr. Mercer, we might look at and talk to science folks about the content that grade eight teaches. If you recall, grade eight students take both the EOC and the CRCT. They've done really well on the EOC, so we want to make sure that we're teaching all of the content.
Isn't that kind of true across the state, though, Beth? Those two areas?
Well, yeah, science and social studies across the areas, and a lot more, I think, in elementary school, and having been there, too. You try to get children reading and knowing their math. Reading, writing, and math are kind of the focus in the elementary school, and it shouldn't be at the behest of the science and social studies. I think with Common Cores, we've spoken, with Common Core and the infusion of reading and writing across the content areas, we'll start seeing that science and social studies and CTAE technical areas will start merging back in, blending in with the reading and writing areas. So hopefully, we'll see an increase. Our reflections on the CRCT. For reading, all the grades, the scores were generally at 98 to 99 percent meets and exceeds, which is awesome to be able to report again from last year. ELA, the gray, across all grades, they maintained a 97 percent or greater for the past four years. Math, across all grades, the scores ranged from 91 percent meet and exceed to 98. The majority were at 97 and 98 when you looked at the sum total. When compared to schools that administer the test to over 1,000 students, because we've got a lot of counties and cities that we compare to when you go across the state charts that have, might have about the same percentage scores, but they might have 100 students total in a grade, or they might have 500 students total in a grade. So when we compared, looking at large systems, we took 1,000, and we basically ranked first in reading, ELA, math, science, and social studies across grades three through eight, the exception of fourth grade social studies and grade eight reading. So, and those were second to a sister county that we're always kind of playing with, and they were by like two hundredths of a point and four hundredths of a point, or two tenths, two tenths of a point, four tenths of a point. And then we have 15 schools that had 100 percent meets and exceeds in at least one, if not more, categories. So that's always nice to know. CRCTM is an alternate form of the CRCT, and it's only, the only students eligible to take the CRCTM are those that are in special ed, so they have to have an IEP. And the first criteria for eligibility beyond being special ed is that you have to have failed a CRCT prior. So after that, there's two other criteria that make you eligible and able to take the test, but that's at a sit-down IEP meeting with parents to determine if the student actually does need to take the CRCTM. So it is students who really do need the extra assistance the M provides, and the M is the same content, but it may be aided by ease with fewer questions per page. Instead of six questions and the graphics all over the page, there might be three questions or two questions, so that there's a lot of white space. They might have hints for questions to kind of help the student out. The content's the same, but they may have changed the verbiage within, so that the student might grapple with it a little bit more easily. Again, these students are the students that are at the lower end, and we're trying to see if we can get them to access the standards at grade level. How many are we talking to take this? Around 450. Now, when you're eligible to take the CRCTM, you have to sit through an IEP meeting and determine whether you're eligible for the reading, for the ELA, and the math. You don't just get to take all three. You have to determine eligibility in each of those areas on three different criteria. So a student of those 400, I think it was 447, could have taken one, could have taken all three. So varying numbers. And if they don't take the M, they take that, the regular CRCT. All students will take the regular CRCT in science and social studies if they took the M in the other subject areas. All I've done is put together the percent at performance level for each subject area. The performance levels are different. It's, does not meet, meet, and exceed for CRCT, but that's on-grade level performance. And the CRCTM, the proficiency levels are below proficiency, emerging proficiency, and basic proficiency. And basically, when you get to basic proficiency, it means that you are able to stand on-grade level content on your own. You might be at the lower end of accessing the content, but you're able to do that. If you make basic proficiency for one year, then the team can meet again the next year and determine to put you on the CRCT, or they can give you one more year with the M. After two years of making basic proficiency on the M, you are required to go back to the CRCT. So this will be the last year coming up, will be the last year for the M, because the PRC assessments include that 1 percent or 2 percent of students at the lower level. The way that they've created the test, it will incorporate the students. So I've just put together a chart of the number of students who are at each particular level compared to the state for reading.
Are these percentages pretty indicative of the percentage that would normally, like out of the 400, it looks like 100 and something of them, 150 were at proficient level?
Yes, it was anywhere from 10 percent to 25, 30 percent.
Right, so that's kind of normal.
And you see, I think sometimes our CRCT scores may be driven up a bit because these students are taken off and take the M. However, their scores count to our overall accountability, and they have to have emerging or basic in order to count in the accountability. So those are M. CRCT and CRCTM retests occurred at the end of the school year. We do remediation through the last month of the school, and then students take the test the last week in the elementary school, and then in the middle school, they take it the first, the two post-planning days. And so those scores are here. And really, what I want to draw your attention to is at the bottom, if you'll notice, for grade three reading, 47 percent passed the retest. Grade five reading, 59 percent passed the retest. Math, 59 percent in grade five passed the retest, and in grade eight, 56 and 53 percent passed the reading and math. So we're hovering right there at that, at least above 50 percent or close to it, of students who come back, remediate with us, and pass the test. And that's similar to when we used to offer a summer program, maybe even a little bit higher, but in this, because the students are there and continue to get remediation from the time CRCT is taken to the end of the year.
All right, EOC scores, just a reminder, high school courses in math, ELA, science, and social studies. Then we also have physical science and coordinate algebra that middle school eighth grade does take as well. And we've got a couple slides on their performance. This chart shows our performance compared to the state. This is pass, so this is meets and exceeds. You can see in all areas, we surpass our performance of the state, anywhere from 5 to 25 percentage points. Our lowest area in coordinate algebra, just wanted to note there that across the state, they experienced low scores in coordinate algebra. There's new course, new standards, more rigorous, even different cut scores, a score that you have to attain to get meets or exceeds. The districts across the state, including Forsyth County, got in contact with state superintendent and the testing department. They have agreed to allow one-time retest blanket for all students. Normally, students that fail the EOC are allowed one retest per course. So if they get below a 70, they can retest in that area, no matter what their score is in the course. In this area, they're going to allow every student to retest. There are several students that might have had an A in the course, did not perform to the level that they wanted to, which dropped them down to a B. So we anticipate that there are going to be several students in this area. The schools are working on remediation plans, and this will happen in August and September. This comparison of our exceeds versus the state, again, you can see in some cases double with the state. Just to draw your attention to coordinate algebra, again, our exceeds rate was double what the state's exceeds rate, and our pass rate was almost double what the state. So we are doing a good job. The scores aren't where we want them to be in that area. And so over the next year, we're going to work on some things to help our math teachers and help our county perform better. Our, Dr. Price is working with some people in the schools to look at the standards and look at different strategies. We're going to get a system-wide data team together for coordinate algebra, bring in a couple teachers from across the county at different levels that performed well, to see what kind of interventions and strategies we can do for the, share with the whole county.
Well, that'd be for math, too, as well.
Math, too, that is also another area that in the exceeds arena, we do not perform where we want to. Again, it's above what the state level is. And the, now, when you look at just pass rate, we are exceeding, we are where we want to be, we're above 80 percent there. But that is an area that we need to look at, because that's going to be changing to analytic geometry next year, so.
That's what I was going to say. We have coordinate algebra, math, too. Do we still have math three?
Yes.
And they're changing them yearly, so.
Right. This first year was coordinate algebra, and so.
Math was math one, went back to the coordinate algebra.
Right, coordinate algebra. And then, still, it's still an integrated approach. In other words, it's just not purely algebra. There's some geometry and some statistics involved with it as well. And then we'll move to analytic geometry for this coming year, which is the same integrated, and it's, again, along the same lines. It's a coordinate algebra, more rigorous, different cut scores. So hopefully, we can put ourselves in a position where we can score better than the performance on coordinate algebra. This is a comparison of scale scores across the state, and you can see, again, consistently above the state performance. Important because the parents see the scale scores on the individual student reports, and it is an area that shows their conversion score. This is, got some information about middle school and high school average. This is the second year that we've done physical science in eighth grade, and you can see that last year, we had 92 percent pass and 68 percent pass. This year, we had an increase in middle school to 95 percent and to 70 percent. So that's positive. We're moving in the right direction. You can see for high school, although there wasn't a change in the pass, there was a change in the exceeds. So positives across the board. This is, shows the exceeds and pass rate changes over 12, 2012 to 2013. Math four, the exceeds went down four points, but the overall pass went up a point. Ninth grade lit, we did see a little bit of a drop in the exceeds, but again, the pass percentage did go up. So again, high-level performing, we just kind of go back and forth on the exceeds. You'll note that economics saw a large percentage increase. So interested in digging into the data and finding out what caused that, if maybe we can replicate that in other areas. Again, just to note that with, we don't have math one or coordinate algebra on there, because this is the first year, so we can't compare from year to year. And with math two, which leads to another point on the scores, the accelerated math two students take the EOC in the winter. So those scores aren't included in the spring administration. So that's why our scores are a little bit lower. But on the next slide, I've combined them to show us how we're doing as a system when you combine both the winter and spring administrations. So just some reflections in economics, not only was there a 10 percent increase in the spring, but also a 7 percent increase in the winter, because economics is taken at two different times, because it's a one semester course by our seniors. The second bullet, when combining both winter and spring administrations of the math two EOC, our exceeds rate was 27 percent, which is almost double what it is now, and the meets and exceeds rate was 87 percent. So when you look at the total of students taking math two, the scores are up there. We are, again, surpassing the state in a good area with our meets and exceeds and exceeds. Again, when compared to school systems that administer tests to over 1,000 students, again, we looked at it with the same lens that we looked at with CRCT, because we do have several systems that scores are up there, but they don't have the challenges with the number of students that we test. We rank number one or two in all EOC areas, EOC areas, except for math two, where we were two tenths of a point, and in number third position. So that's, I think that's great news for our schools. It really shows what our teachers and students are doing. And then nine out of the 10 middle schools had 100 percent meets and exceeds on the coordinate algebra. So we are including middle school teachers when we get this data team together to look at what we can do for our students.
So impressive.
That is amazing.
It is amazing.
They, schools, they do a great job.
Oh, they all do. Hats off to all the teachers.
I was going to say, kudos to the teachers. They're the ones that are making all of this happen, and we appreciate everything that they do for the sake of our children. If you are a data nut, or you just like looking at charts, please feel free. For further information, more school and system-wide across the state comparisons, you may go to the DOE. All of the blue links are hyperlinked, so they'll take you straight to the place that I've put underneath it, the actual webpage. So you can click on EOC or CRCT for statewide scores. The DOE communications, Matt Cardoza is very good about putting out the, all the information. You can go there to the public policy page, or affairs and policy communications page. And then within our system, you can go to the FCS website and look on our four dashboard. That is going to be updated by next week. Data profiles will be finished by tomorrow. Thank you to our supportive staff and assessment, and these board presentations are always posted. If you have questions, contact Mr. Mercer or myself.
Is the RISA, we're in the metro RISA exactly, so those test scores we're comparing to the metro area, is that correct?
For the RISA.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to verify that. Okay. Well, that's even more impressive to me, very much so.
Maybe we should give it back to the math teachers and get them to have the kids analyze it and provide a project back to DOE.
It's a project.
It looks like a project. It looks like a project.
It was interesting just comparing it to some of the high schools that you know, some of the ones in Norfolk County and some in Cobb County, which are on par with, what I say on par with ours, that if you look across our district and the number of high schools that we have that are so, well, they're all good and they all do well, it's more impressive to me that we do it as a county, that we have schools across the county that are good and not just one here and there. That's what's impressive. It's that coordination and the good support from central office and the working together, the schools with, among themselves doing the collaboration is really paying off.
I agree.
I think so.
Especially there's district collaboration days that we all have, that we can send our teachers each other.
Well, I think it's the common standards we use across the board in this, in this system and how we teach those and the curriculum we provide. And that strategy has been, since I've been involved with the schools, and so I think that's what we use to support it, you know, the Common Core is just going to take us to the next place and make us visibly nationally. So we'll be getting these scores nationally after that and I don't, I expect to see the same thing, you know, that we're not last in education in Georgia, especially in Forsyth.
And the CRCT cut scores were not changed this year. There was a slight transition to, to the Common Core testing, they'll transition the test again this year and then it'll be a hundred percent in the fourteen, fifteen year and cut scores will change. I don't know if they'll change cut scores this year or if they'll wait till next year, but they made the decision not to change them this year. They did change E O C T for the coordinate algebra.
I think it's real important to note, no matter what happens with what curriculum at the state level, whatever the testing is, that we're going to be okay.
Yeah.
That we, we have, as Tom said, high standards and we have good teachers and a good central office, we'll be okay no matter what happens at the state.
Yeah, just understanding that standard and teaching it. It's that easy. And then crunching the data.
I think they may make it look easier than it is.
I agree.
And we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, on our presentation and discussion, we have policy G A N revision with Connie Trent. Good evening.
The Georgia Department of Public Health is charging school districts statewide to become one hundred percent tobacco-free. At this point, ninety-one school districts out of the one hundred and eighty-one districts in Georgia have become one hundred percent tobacco-free school through their policy. While Forsyth County School is a tobacco-free district, we are not eligible to become one of those on the list for a tobacco-free school because our policy omits one word and that is visitors. So we are recommending to revise policy G A N to include the word visitor. After that revision, we will be eligible to be put on the list as a one hundred percent tobacco-free school. This, doing this, the Georgia Department of Public Health will provide us with signage for our campuses at no cost and also they'll give us materials for the Georgia Tobacco Quit Line and that's all free of charge. Our obligation is to inform the community of our policy change and also to install the signage.
Okay.
Okay.
Anybody, I think we just leave this on the table to our meeting August fifteenth and then we'll go on in, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, we have Mr. Dan Jones with a financial report.
Okay, we have tonight the financial report for June thirtieth, two thousand thirteen. This is the last month in our fiscal year and I think you're going to see some good news in here. The financial report, we started the month at fifty-four million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our receipts for the month were fifteen million, eight hundred and thirteen thousand. Our expenses for the month were twenty-four million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, leaving us cash at the end of the year of forty-six million dollars. And that is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars less than this time last year. So we're pretty much the same as we were last year.
So we'll have enough money to cover us until the tax money comes in in November.
It's really good.
No, no likelihood that we'll have to borrow, we'll be good.
We should be good. Budget, this is where you're going to see some good numbers. If you look at revenue, we're a hundred and two percent of what we budgeted, so that equates to about six million dollars more than what we budgeted. Expenditures overall were ninety-nine point three percent. So we came in under budget on expenses by one point eight million. So those are the, that's a good combination, you're over on revenue and under on expense. That helps the bottom line. Here's the areas, abhorrent taxes were a hundred and one percent. The two areas that I think I've talked to you about every month on most, it indicates that we are growing in the, in the county, intangible and real estate transfer tax, you can see we well exceeded what we budgeted. In the past three years, we've had trouble, we didn't even meet what we had budgeted, so I think those are good indications. So revenue again is a hundred and two percent and every area, as you scroll through, is right at a hundred or just below a hundred percent in expenditures. So we appreciate everybody minding their budget and making sure that they watch expenditures.
So was there any one thing in the expenditures that was lower than anticipated or was just a little bit here and there that kind of added up?
Well, instruction, you see that it's, go back up, a little bit over in the salary areas and that's because we added some positions during the year because of growth that we didn't budget for. And the rest of them were coming in under, see that was ninety-five percent, ninety percent, ninety-five, eighty-three, ninety-eight. The business area was a hundred percent. And then on down ninety-two and ninety-nine and ninety-seven. So everybody did a good job of watching their expenses for the year and that's what it takes is to make sure that we meet our budget.
We certainly appreciate the staff doing that, it's phenomenal.
A listing of the checks for the month, and again, we can get any information you need. And then in June, as has happened in the past, the schools are out, so we don't have reports for the schools, we'll get those for you when everybody gets back, should be maybe July, maybe August. Sales tax, sales tax for the month was two million, five hundred and eighty-three thousand, this was for May sales and it's exceeded the previous month by seven, almost seven point three percent. I didn't plug in that one for the year, so I'll get it. Sales tax is invested, we earned two hundred and nineteen dollars for the month and right now, sales tax four, there's four million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand. And it's low because we pulled out, you can see, about fifteen billion dollars to make debt service payments. Sploes four collections on the graph.
Up and down.
We had one blip and it looks like we're pretty much almost a straight line for the rest of the year, so, but we're still up from last time. Sploes three, we earned a hundred and one dollars in interest and there's a hundred and two dollars. And the reason for that is when we did our bond refunding, our bond counsel saw that we had money left in sales tax three and he said, once you're finished with all your projects, you need to transfer that to debt service. So we transferred it during the month and then it earned interest for part of that month that was still in there and we'll transfer this out. So that money is going into the debt service fund for bond payments.
Okay.
And he's already gone, okay.
The two thousand seven bond, we earned six hundred and eighty-eight dollars in interest and there's seven million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand in that one. Oh five, there's three hundred and twenty dollars in interest and there's three million, one hundred and eighty-nine thousand in that one. Capital outlay, there's a total of seven million, two thirty-six that's available and I think when we make application for this next school, we'll show this as being encumbered. And in debt service between the sploes and the checking account, there's eleven million, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And you can see, here's the transfer down here that we made, sploes three into the debt service fund.
Okay.
And that's the financial report, any questions?
I got a question about, about the schools accounts.
Yes, ma'am.
At the beginning of the year is when you transfer money, like so much per student for their operating expenses into their accounts, is that how?
We don't actually transfer money, within our system, there's allocated money for them to spend and they have to go through the purchasing process.
So the money that's in their account, is that included in that?
No.
No.
No, that's money that is at the schools, that they manage at the school level.
Okay, they generate themselves.
Right. The money that we allocate to them is all run through our books up here.
Okay, so when we do see that report for the end of the year, it will not have any monies that we've added or anything, it'll be a true end of the year even when it comes in, okay.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have future agenda items.
I don't know if it's an agenda item, but when Ms. Trent came up here, I just remember that we used to get a report at the end of the year about the number of visits to the clinic and that's information that I've used before and I just would like to have that report, it could be in just points of information. If it's available, I don't want her to go to a lot of trouble, but I just think it's interesting.
It is interesting. It really is, it stunned me, I had no idea that they had that many people. I'm sure she had that.
Yeah, I think so, all the nurses keep a report.
If we could just put a point of information next month, please.
And we have a timeline coming up where we're going to, in the future agenda items, I guess we need a timeline for redistricting and.
I had a question about facilities too, the five-year plan, I thought it was going to be now, is it going to be August, now that we'll get presented with it and final approval or?
The timeline is, in the work session in August?
Work session in August for the redistricting timeline.
Okay.
Mr. McKnight, timeline for the facilities plan, we've looked at that, what month was that? May?
Well, no, it's, it's in November, it's due in November, isn't it, to the state?
I thought we were reviewing it, yeah, I thought we were reviewing it, discuss it.
Right.
I can get another copy, I have to get it to, as far as the timeline for the other things that we have to do.
When are you planning to present us with the facilities, with the plan?
We can present to you with the timeline for it next month.
We did, we already did the timeline, I thought.
Yeah, but I think, I think it may not, not be on, exactly where we're at now.
When are you planning to present us with the plan?
I'm not logged in on the exact date because it's kind of had to do a couple of things.
I believe that Bill, that presentation will be given to the board in October, but they actually take action, if I'm not mistaken, in November.
I'm not sure of those dates.
And then it would then be submitted at a later time for state board of education approval.
I think you're correct, but I'm not, aren't so sure, I think a longer date might have changed.
Okay, well, if we, maybe we can schedule that update for our October, I mean, our August work session, just to make sure that we're, we're looking at both the timeline for redistricting as well as the development of the facilities plan.
It's going to kind of go hand in hand.
Yeah, I actually thought it was coming earlier too, you know, we did get the report of what everybody requested and everything, but I must have misunderstood.
I thought we were going to review it and study it in July and August, I just thought that's what we were told somewhere.
We'll, we'll put that on the agenda then to discuss at the, at the work session next month. Okay, any, anything else, anybody got questions or would like to know about, we're good? Okay, now we have the action items and the first one is the IT'S Learning Contract and that will be Bailey Mitchell.
Mike Evans.
And Mike Evans.
He is the IT'S Learning guru.
Everybody's got a partner tonight.
Partner indeed, that's an excellent way to say it. We're here tonight to present the board with approval for the contract of our new IT'S Learning personalized learning platform. As you've heard it described in the past, it will actually replace two of our major instructional systems, one's called Angel, that's our learning management system, and the other is our assessment system, which is called Edge of Soft. And I've asked Mike to just give a quick overview of IT'S Learning, its capability and some current events around what we've been doing with teachers and implementation rollout.
So at this point with the implementation with IT'S Learning and the previous sessions that I've shared, the focus on IT'S Learning is really to drive the instructional components, bring that one place for the teachers to go to for content, for the online and offline assessment for the students and to drive that repository of content for the teachers to help present the instructional materials and, and also provide that communication piece for the parents to give them access and a vision, a view into what takes place in the classroom with the planners and the resources. So at this point, we began our summer training over this, this past June and we have had just about a thousand teachers enrolled in the online training course, it's self-paced for them to go through it and we've had great feedback from them along the way. We've had about three hundred teachers have attended the face-to-face, level one training, introductory training for the, for the really hands-on approach. And about a hundred and forty teachers have participated in the level two training, which is, that training will take you to the next level. We have, with the focus of the grant, we've had about a hundred and sixty teachers participate in the personalized learning training. This is a training that's dedicated to the research of the grant and really implementing the personalized learning strategies that, that we're going to focus on as the transformative action in the classroom. So that's going to be a focus for those treatment schools that'll receive the recommendation engine this year and that's, that's looking very positive, the, the feedback we've received and the folks that have seen what that's going to look like when it's rolled out September has been, has been fantastic. Content in the, the repository that we have, when school starts, we will have about eleven thousand digital objects in the library with keywords, descriptions aligned to standards that includes the harvested content that Rachel and Erin from the I three team have developed over the last year, two and a half years, but also teachers that have begun working over the summer. And the grant also funded sixty-four teachers to work over the summertime developing content, putting it in there, so we actually have content now instead of just K twelve, I'm sorry, instead of just six, twelve math and language arts, K twelve, all subject areas, math, language.
All teachers in the county will have access.
Right.
Great.
That's great because when we visit schools, a lot of times I see this good idea and I think, gosh, I wonder if other people know, you know, when they're doing stuff, so that, that'll really help that, I think.
Right. It's in the feedback I've received from the principals and the I T S that have spoken with teachers that have really been involved in IT'S Learning has, has been so positive. They've really been enjoying it, so we're really looking for a, a really high adoption as we're moving forward too.
Oh, that's just great.
Yeah.
And now how will this, what will infinite campus, what will the role for infinite campus be? This is not going to, we'll still have, they'll still have infinite campus, right?
We'll still have infinite campus, yes.
Yeah, infinite campus is our system of record and that is what we have to have in play for being compliant with all the state requirements for reporting F D E, which is where we get our money and the, so no changes, I mean, it's still an integral component of what teachers will have access to and use.
Okay.
So the, the actual item itself is, is a contract and the fee for this first year is five hundred and seventy-six thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty cents. And that's based on the last F D E count, so each year it'll adjust according to enrollment with a fixed fee for the next five years. To give you an example of our cost for the two legacy systems that I mentioned, Angel and Edge of Soft, you know, last year we spent about four hundred and ninety-two thousand on those two systems, so, you know, for the most part, we're saving money with, it's, it's going to be pretty much revenue neutral, but it's not more significantly more as you can tell based on those numbers.
But a much better quality system though.
Yeah, I mean.
But a much better quality system though, spending a lot.
More streamlined.
We're getting unification, which is what teachers are clamoring for, not having to log into, you know, two different systems to be able to get functionality. And I think it's greatly expanding our ability and pathway around curriculum management. Been in some pretty intense challenges with the publishers over the last three year, not last three years, last three months, saying that, you know, we know that what we'll ultimately have in the system is a combination of things that we can develop on our own, harvest free off the internet, our teacher-developed content, and even student-contributed content. But also taking into account the fact that there's still a lot of good things that may be able to be purchased if they're formatted correctly, so they can be used in a, in a, you know, a learning platform like this. In other words, more granular, you know, I heard the term earlier used around the electronic textbook, that's not really what we're looking for. We're looking for those learning activities and those assessments that are broken down, and we're able to choose, you know, based on it in a more granular format, and bring it into the system, and subscribe to it as needed. We are in the process of interfacing some of our other electronic content, Safari Montage will be the first with all of our video collections and such. The, and, you know, it's important to note that this has been a co-development effort with IT'S Learning, and we feel like we've kept up our end of the work in a significant way, but we've been incredibly impressed with the way that IT'S Learning team has also been taking this project very seriously, and they meet all the deadlines. They do what they say they're gonna do, and we have a very open and honest, almost twice-weekly, you know, avenue of communication around where we are and what we need to do, and, and what are the next steps, so we feel just really good about that.
So, you've had a lot of input on the direction of the end product?
A significant amount of input, and, you know, for a, a, a product to have that kind of co-development mindset, I think is really telling of the fact that, you know, IT'S Learning is learning from us, and of course, we're learning from them. But they've harvested, I think, a lot of wisdom and good practice and good pedagogy, because we're able to take what they develop, put it in front of teachers and students and our administrators very quickly, and turn around feedback, and it allows them to, you know, to, to speed up the development and relevancy of their product for the global market they serve.
It sounds like you're getting a lot faster buy-in and excitement from the staff on this compared to years ago, when we've kinda got into the Angel thing, and it seemed like that took a little while to catch on with some of the teachers.
Yeah, I mean, Mike could tell you probably some of the, the feedback we've gotten, I know, you know, my wife's an English language arts teacher, and I said, "You gotta go to one of the classes," and she did very willingly, was, and actually appreciated the opportunity because those closed out very quickly. And the feedback I got was that, number one, it's incredibly easy to use, I understood the structure, the word flow, it made a lot of sense. I appreciate the unification of the two systems that I normally had to then log in previously, and that this will be very intuitive for parents and my students to be able to operate right out of the box.
Parents will appreciate, parents are gonna appreciate that.
Well, I even liked the, the student part, being able to download, 'cause we had the two young students earlier this year that presented great projects, and that just makes it more of a learning community, it's just not about teachers. Teaching down to students is learning together, and I think that's great, that this IT'S Learning is gonna be that way.
And you know, it was in the section that Mike and his team put together around the personalized learning classroom, and just listening to the teachers present out on their projects, and the creativity that, that the product, I think, in essence cultivates. You could see, you know, in a very short period of time, the way that they could assemble an activity that would be great for students and that they could add to and, and supplant as, as the year progresses and as we change from year to year. It was just kind of instant, I mean, they would go to work for fifteen to thirty minutes and then report out, and you could just see the wealth of different ways that students could approach an assignment, the choices that they had around the kind of learning resources they could use to, to be successful at that particular standard. And then the fact that the teachers could do it very quickly and, and have it ready for use.
That's great.
And are they, as we move to Common Core, are they being tagged with those standards as well, so they're very clear?
That's correct.
Yeah, that's a key piece of this, and Tom, say something about the dashboard, is the...
The interface dashboards?
Well, the, the mastery and standards dashboard.
The, the, the recommendation that's gonna be released in, in September is one of the, the pinnacles of the research of the grant, the aspect. But what they've released to us this summer is the actual tracking of learning objectives and standards, something that we haven't seen before. And that's something where a teacher, and parents also, can go in and view reports based on their child or the students in the classroom, how many standards they've mastered, how many they, they, how many they have not met yet, how many they have met, and how many they've exceeded based on certain thresholds. And that's now gonna be available to the parents for the first time to be able to go in there. So, we're gonna be working with the administrators and the teachers on best practices of actually utilizing the tools within IT'S Learning to present that to the parents, to make sure that that's a tool that would be used and valued.
And used correctly, you'd hate to see those parents that if their child hasn't mastered all of the standards on their timetable, then...
And communication is the key, because it also shows how many students have not been assessed yet.
Right.
And if they're looking halfway through the year, and they see that if, if a teacher is not using it where they're aligning objects and resources, then, then it, it would show a negative aspect. So, the communication is important also to make sure that the, the teachers understand that they have a wider audience now.
Yeah, that's good.
But I think it helps the parent know those deficient areas and implements teaching in life, you know, at home, at the market, at the stores, you know, teaches the standards when they see them, 'cause it'll be in their head, so it'll, we'll be on a common thinking between, you know, building that bridge, as we always said, between the parent and us.
Yeah, it's described as, you know, shoulder surfing with Angel, where you look over your child's login to the learning management system. Now, the parent will have their own access, so you can, you know, you can look into the activities of the classroom, and, you know, if you're helping or mentoring, or, you know, just wanting to be aware, it's all access.
I think that'll be helpful, parents, I know I use smarter than your fifth grader, but they'll need help on their math assignment, and you try to explain the way you knew when you were taught a few years back, and they wanna be taught the way their teacher taught them. So, to be able to go in and see that and say, "Oh, now I get it," will be very helpful, it's wonderful.
It will be.
Really?
Yeah.
So, it's my recommendation to the superintendent that we, we approve this year's version of the, or, this, this year's ver, chapter, I'll say, of the contract for IT'S Learning at an annual cost of five-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand, two-hundred-and-forty-two dollars and sixty cents out of regular budget funds.
It is recommended that the Forsyth County Board of Education approve a contract with IT'S Learning as spelled out in the contract, in the amount, and the criteria established in your attachment.
Do I have a motion to approve the recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Nancy and a second by Tom, all in favor, unanimous?
So, just a quick update on Mike's new role as Director of Information Services and Instructional Support. He's hit the ground running, working very well, his staff are very excited about the direction for that department, and the fact that we have Mike now in that leadership role.
Great.
We are too.
Congratulations. Looking forward to giving some updates and rumors for you.
Good.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, our next action item will be Dr. Hall, and it's our local school board governance training plan for next year.
As is customary this time of year, you all are responsible for approving your training plan through the local board governance legislation for fiscal year fourteen. It'll look much similar to what we did in fiscal year thirteen, and I also attached the annual report there so that you will sign that document tonight, and we will submit that to the state, letting them know that we met the requirements for fiscal year thirteen. So, as veteran board members, you all are prescribed to six hours of state-approved curriculum, which will, you will do December the fifth through Georgia School Boards Association, either in school law or student achievement. And then we'll also do the required three hours of whole-board training with yourself, along with a superintendent, at a board retreat January tenth, two thousand and fourteen. Again, as customary, and we will locate the provider and curriculum as we see what we need for this upcoming school year at a later time. But we have designated that we would do that again at the board retreat in January. So, I ask that you approve that tonight, and we will get everything documented and submitted to the state.
Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation?
I move we approve FL-14 training plan for the Board of Education.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Kristen, all in favor?
Just a minute.
Up, you want a discussion?
We are, when we sign off on this, are we dedicated to having to take those courses, are we allowed to change?
We can change them, we just let them know in writing that we've made a, some type of substantive change, and there may be others that we add throughout the year. I know Darla did an additional one this year through boards here, so there's, there's enough room for modifications throughout the year.
Okay, good.
And I'll, we'll look at the new recognition plan through Georgia School Boards Association, which is replacing the standards. And the second and third subsequent years of that does require that you do additional training above and beyond the mandatory six and three hours. So, we'll look at that next month to see, because that might be something that we wanna explore, you know, more regularly throughout the school year, but that is, that is part of that new plan, as Tom, you're aware of.
Sounds good.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, unanimous? And now we have the points of information with Dr. Evans.
I would share with you, in addition to the information that Dr. Hall just shared with you, you'll be getting a, an email with some potential location options for us to have the board retreat, and we'll also be looking at the potential providers and trying to get a match for what you think your interest and board needs are, and we'll try to match that up with the provider as well. Couple of items that I would share with you on our points of information, recently, our assistive technology program at Forsyth County Schools was recognized with receiving two different awards. You may remember, and may have met Chris Swain, Chris is actually our assistive technology facilitator in the district, working in Sarah Taylor's department. But the district won the Assistive Technology Team Award for two thousand and thirteen, and Ann Kohler won the two thousand and thirteen Tools for Life Assistive Technology Innovation Award. So, we were very pleased with that type of information that we were able to share with you. And also, I'm in possession of a nice thank you letter from a superintendent colleague of mine who borrowed the services of Mr. Mitchell to come in and help him provide a little bit of help in terms of figuring out why their technology wasn't working very well. And I'm, I'm not sure to what extent they are now indebted to us, but we will certainly try to capitalize on that at some point in time. But we do appreciate our personnel from time to time lending their services to help other people come to a better level of functionality, whether it would be working here in our district, or occasionally even going out and working with them, so we appreciate that.
Okay, now we have the executive sessions next for personnel issues. Do I have a motion to go into executive sessions?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Tom and a second by Nancy, all in favor, unanimous?